To consider introduce, A, second reading for amendments to Appendix K. Jeff is here, okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jeff Hammond, the town's code officer. As the mayor just mentioned, we're here tonight to do a second reading of a proposed amendment to the town's land use ordinance, which is Appendix K in the Bucksport Town Code. The first reading was held at your meeting on the 24th of January, and during that reading, they, I don't believe there are any concerns expressed either by the council or by the public, so there were no changes made after the first reading. So tonight, we're essentially doing a second reading of the same ordinance. And I'll just quickly go through and summarize what the changes involve. The first group of changes are changes to the town's zoning map that will take 11 resource protection zones and convert them into limited residential. The reason for the change is because we, in 2009, we were required to put these properties in resource protection by DEP. Three years later, they reversed their position and made it optional for towns, so we are now just getting around to taking care of that. So I've already shared the changes to DEP, and I don't believe there will be any concerns about changing the zones back to limited residential. The second group of changes deals with adding land uses in the industry development district and the industry development shoreline overlay district. That's a recommendation made by the Comprehensive Plan. So there are several new types of commercial uses that aren't at the industry level that would be allowable, subject to approval by this council. The third group of changes deals with making public buildings accessible, so stairs and ramps will be subject to review and permitting when they are used to access public buildings. And when the planning board reviews a new project, they'll be reviewing accessibility standards, make certain that the building they've constructed meets all applicable requirements for accessibility. And the same would apply for renovations of existing buildings. Those also would be reviewed for making any accessibility improvements if it made sense to do that. The next standard affects home-based business offices. Right now, any type of home-based business office requires a permit. The change would allow some types of home-based business offices to operate without a permit with the Another land use is added that deals with small sawmill facilities. That's a production type of business that we're identifying individually in the ordinance and making certain that those small sawmill facilities comply with noise standards. Off of Route 1, it's in the Bagley Avenue area. Currently, one family, one and a half family, and two family buildings are prohibited. They, once were allowed in that same district before we changed the ordinance in 2010, they were allowed. This proposal is making them allowable use once again. And the last change is in definitions. Right now, we have separate definitions for private schools, public schools, and post-secondary educational facilities. We're proposing to combine all three of those into one category simply called school. And that's it for proposed changes. I understand you're holding a public hearing tonight also?
Public hearing, yeah, a little bit later on, so we'll take comments and stuff at that time. Thank you, Jeff. Sir, as I can see?
I'm good, thank you.
You sure?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda under ordinance is the first reading of amendment to Section 10-402. I believe this is to do with trucks.
It is, and there is an updated version that was available at the table, and it, what it involved was that not all the new words were underlined and a line was left out, which made a determination of something, if it was necessary for an exemption to be allowed to go from, on Broadway, from Nicholson Avenue, that that would be, that determination would be made by the police chief, and that line had been left out. This language came out of work by the committee that looked at our rules for trucks over 34,000 pounds and how they operated in Bucksport. I will say that there is another section of the ordinance that should also be amended, and that is, that's part of this language, and that is the section of, Section 10, that lists the roads that are impacted by this, because a number of the roads that are listed are no longer roads, or are, they're not called what they are in the ordinance. So, well, this is the first reading on Section 10-402. For your next meeting, there will be a first reading on the section, in Section 10, that makes those lists, and hopefully, the third meeting will result in putting the two pieces together, but that's the
So we shouldn't hold the, we should hold a first hearing, then there's a second hearing and a public hearing, but subsequent meeting after that?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? We've talked this quite a lot through, so. Anybody from the audience have anything on that? Item eight, discussion items, assessment, former mill property. Jeff is right over there.
Yes, Jeff is here. To introduce this, the AIM has filed a request for review of their valuation related to the power plant. This has been anticipated since they purchased the property. I was somewhat surprised that we hadn't seen it before now, actually, but it's a, it's a request, not a demand, and our assessor has been working with them on information, but the, we're at a point now where in order for the town to have good information on what is there that we need a professional evaluation of that in order to be able to compare it to the valuation that AIM has had done of that same stuff. So Jeff has secured a proposal from the same person who did the valuation the last time we had it done, and while it's not inexpensive, it is, I believe, an investment that the council is going to need to make in order to be able to adequately discuss this $60-plus million in value. And Jeff can provide more information or answer any questions.
So basically, to answer questions, I think the obvious question is what kind of abatement is Bucksport Generation looking for? And their consultant proposed a valuation of $42 million for the plant that we're calling $60 million, so it's quite a substantial decrease that they're asking for. Some of it, we understand, there's been some changes, some physical changes to the building, there's been some obvious changes that had to happen after the power plant was disconnected from the mill. It was designed to be working in concert with the mill. So now that they have made all of their changes and made their decisions that they've been working on for these four years, our industrial appraiser can take another look at it and see if he agrees with them, or if he has another opinion of what that value is. And of course, it's something that takes a lot of expertise and a lot of knowledge as to what these plants are worth, so that's why George St. Susie's been asked to give us this proposal, so we can hire them to do the work. The abatement request was filed in December, and we have 60 days to answer that request or deny it, or give some kind of partial abatement or a full abatement. And so we're almost at the end of that 60 days, so we're hoping to have a meeting with them next week in order to at least get another extension or come up with a conclusion. But it's probably not something that our appraiser can do in a week, so we're hoping for another extension on that. If we, if it does, if it is deemed denied, which would happen if our extension, if our time runs out, that means that it would, it would be, it would go to the next level of a review, which would be our local board of assessment review. And I don't, don't, don't wish that upon them, because it's something that's beyond our expertise to handle really locally, so that it would just be another, another round of waiting and probably, I'm not going to put words into their mouth, but probably a conclusion that would have to go to the next step, which would be the state board of assessment review, which, as we know, working with some projects in the past, it can be very time-consuming and costly to go to that level. So we're hoping to come to a mutual agreement using our professionals.
AIM has, has been very cooperative in this, as I said, a request, not a demand, and has granted an extension already to get to where the council would be considering this, the ability for this appraisal, which will allow it to move forward on our part. So this is a process, not an event, but not an unplanned-for or an unanticipated.
Just so people have numbers, what are we talking about for taxes on 42 million if it's theirs?
Right, so the difference between 16 and 42 is 18, and the tax amount based on the current mill rate would be about $300,000 in taxes if the whole thing was debated.
So for that end, the recommendation is to hopefully have a evaluation done on our side that maybe can update it a little bit?
Exactly, so we're looking to see where our number should be. And they did submit some, you know, of course, a request that has information, that there was other information given to us earlier in the year, and preliminarily, our recommendation from our appraiser was that we shouldn't just settle on it, that we
Take a look at it.
Definitely needs to be looked at. And so we would try to come up with something to satisfy the current tax year, and also come up with a number for next year and years to come. And we would probably set up a system where we had with the mill, where they would submit to us any recommended changes, anything that they've done, and so year to year, we can make adjustments to something that we've agreed upon, and probably occasionally need to revisit it with a professional, but we can work with the
Next question I had, so they've been taxed at 60 since this started? If all of a sudden, it's determined that they're at 50, do we owe them back?
They have not requested that.
Okay. Did I open my mouth?
Yeah, it's an abatement request, it's an abatement request, so they were, they're actually asking for the $300,000 based on their consultant's
For the one year?
For the one year.
For the current year, yes.
But not for
Previous years.
That's right.
Right, okay, I
No, no, nobody's going backwards.
Four years?
And the other thing that's a possibility that they discussed is if there's some different value, that it can be a phased-in approach, that it may not have to all
Come at once.
Come at once. So as I said, they're, they're being reasonable about what they're asking the town to look at.
And this is a company that we've worked with before, Jeff, you said?
Yes.
They did it before.
Jeff, since no one's asked, what's it going to cost us to get it?
Well, the proposal is, is up to $20,000, and there's a fee schedule in there. When we've had these kind of up-to figures before, they've never gone to the ceiling on it, so I mean, I know that they're, they're not just spending that money, they're, they're keeping track and doing the best they can to keep our costs reasonable, but
Up to $20,000?
Up to $20,000.
Wasn't the last one substantially more?
Oh, boy. It was, yeah.
It was $40,000.
Yeah, I was actually thinking more than that, but
Yeah, and the last time, it was actually two appraisals. It was the 2014, which was kind of a review of where we were before the mill closed, and then the 2015, which was after the mill closure, because that needed the two to compare for the sudden and severe program for the state. So now, we're looking at something that's more like a review of that 2015 one, so it's understandable it wouldn't, wouldn't be as expensive. But there's been quite a few changes, and we do expect some adjustments.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the public? David?
What's the acreage that's being sold to May Maritime? Is that six or seven acres?
That sounds about right.
May Maritime?
There's a subdivision plan.
Five. May Maritime is five acres.
Five acres, okay.
Yeah, I've seen the subdivision plan, but it hasn't, it hasn't gone through the registry of deeds yet, so I haven't touched it, but we will, we will when that actually happens.
Anything else from the council? Thanks, Jeff. Anything from the public on this? We will be discussing this over and over again for a while, but I think the recommendation would be, we take the recommendation
They need a vote.
From now? Motion to
Motion to accept the proposal?
Second. Second from Paul. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. And that's to give you the authority to go ahead and do this, because
Yeah.
$308,000 to $20,000 is, could be a big difference. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Item nine, agenda items, to adopt resolve 2019-37 to set the budget workshop schedule for 2019.
The resolve in your packets begin the review of the budget on April 4th and conclude with a public hearing adoption on June 13th. It keeps your budget review meetings on Thursday nights. Some are on council meeting nights, and two are on other nights, other than council meeting nights, but it, it is a total of seven meetings, there can be more if you need them, but we, in the past, that has been sufficient. So that's, as proposed, unless someone has, I, in the past, people have indicated that keeping things on Thursday nights was a good way to do it, because that was the night of week that people were
And those two we don't meet will be at six, and not
Are at six instead of seven. The two, April 4th and April 18th, would be at six, and all others would be at seven.
Does council like to proceed? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further from the public? We're setting dates to look at our budget going forward, so month of April, and we'll be busy. Do you have a motion of second?
Mayor, those two six o'clock ones, I'll be pushing, I'll be, I'll try to, I'll try to get out early, so.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Item B, to adopt resolve 2019-38 to sell Wilson Hall to Larry Wall on the terms and conditions outlined in rehabilitation grant, selling agreement, and quick claim deed with covenants recapture provision.
Two meetings ago, the council requested that I prepare information on this that included a resolve and then documents that mirrored the way that the town had handled the last project that it did in this manner with a forgivable loan. And Rich Rotella, our community and economic development director, prepared the quick claim deed and the rehab grant selling agreement, which is what those things were called, and there's also a letter in here from Mr. Wall answering some of the questions that were raised last time, and the resolve itself, which discusses the forgivable loan and the terms and conditions and those kind of things. So this is what you asked for, and this is all of the information that I have in regard to this. Mr. Wall is here if you have questions as well.
Okay. First, any, does council like to act?
I've given this a lot of thought.
Do you want to have a motion first, or?
Do we make a, a vote?
Then we'll do a little bit of
Oh, no, oh, okay. I'll make my motion to accept the resolve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Anything from the public on this? Hearing nothing? Anything from the council?
Yeah, as I started to say, I've given this a lot of thought, and I recognize, you know, it's a controversial topic, and we've talked about it a long time over the years, long before many of us have been sitting up here. And I respect Chairman Stewart's idea, perspective, put it out to bid, which I think is a prudent thing to do in most cases, but in this case, I think, you know, it's sort of kicking the can down the road with this, this subject. I mean, I think people have mentioned over the last few years, number of years, that we've been looking at this for a long time, and as I said, the last, one of the last meetings, we can't, those of us up here that weren't there can't look back and say, we should have done, should have done that, we're here now. So it's not a fruitful endeavor, in my mind, to spend much time looking back and saying they should have done this or that. I think it's important that, you know, there's talk about the unforgivable, or the forgivable loan. One, I think it's pointed out in the, in the resolve that we've done that in the past, and I think the classic example is sitting down the street a little ways, the Jet Valley Tavern, which is a beautiful building right now, and was given life partly as a result of that tool, that mechanism. I think it's also important, we talk about $65,000, to think about $35,000 to $40,000 that we were going to spend to tear down that building. So when you think about numbers, you have to put those sorts of things in perspective. The other piece that goes with that is that there's no guarantee in anything, but what we're looking at is a building that can be placed back on the tax rolls. And nobody's talking about getting rich initially. The town's not going to get rich with tax, money's coming in from that building, but it gives it life, and it gives it hope and an opportunity to not only pay back monetarily, but pay back emotionally, pay back the tradition of the town, and keep a part of our history alive as we continue to move forward. I think what is planned to be done is going to add a minimum, prevent that building from continuing to deteriorate and fall in, based on the plans that have been put forth in good faith by the prospective buyer. If he, if Mr. Wall decides at some point that it's not going to work, we hope, and I believe that certainly, the building's going to be stable, and whatever happens, happens after that, but we'll have a stable building. I surely hope that if the council votes for it, that it'll, it'll be successful. And I think the last part is that what we're talking about is a known quantity here. We're talking about somebody that has been committed emotionally, committed time, resources, money, he's a local businessman. I think it's, it's a better gamble, if you want to call it a gamble, to go in this direction than to put it out to some unknown quantity, so that's what I see.
Thanks.
Since our last meeting, has anyone approached the town about the building?
A person who was formerly interested said that if, and worked with the town, said that if it went out, that he might look at it again.
Anybody else?
I also had somebody that said they might be interested for it to bid. I totally respect Larry Wall for stepping forward and doing what he's doing, and wanting to save the building, and I think that's, you know, but I just think we've moved too fast. I think that, you know, we say, yo, it's been up, this has been going on for a really long time, but like I said last time, it hasn't for me. It's, this is the council that we have it now, this is the council that should be making decisions on it now, not, not from what's happened over and over again in the past. I'm still a little worried, too, about the Nicholson O'Day, put out the $400,000 appraisal to get it, to be standing and be safe, and Larry says he can do that, the third of that. And I'm just, for me, I just feel like that's, we're too soon, we're moving too fast, we need to slow it down, go back, put it out, see if anybody wants it, and then maybe come back and see later on, you know, what happens.
We've had this on the market a couple of times before, and nobody showed any interest there. So, you know, sure, we can put it on the market again, but this seems like a pretty good deal, for getting the thing back on the tax roll in the space, even considering that $35,000 to $40,000, this would tear the thing down. It just doesn't make any sense to me not to go forward with this offer. And waiting, I mean, you know, like I say, we've had it on the market at least twice since Sue's been here as town manager, so I, I feel like we've already gone that route. We're interested, I mean, people saying, yeah, I'd like to look at it, I'd like to look at it, well, they've had plenty of time to look at it.
Yeah, a couple of things, I, certainly, in running for town council, and I mentioned several times, rather adamantly, that I thought probably that Wilson Hall's time had run its course. I'm reversing course a little bit on that, and no pressure, Mr. Wall, but a lot of that is because of your interest in the building. Mr. Wall is obviously vested financially in the building when we look at the amount of personal funds that he's putting towards the building versus the amount of the micro loan. He's demonstrated, one of few people who's demonstrated a hand, hands-on interest in this building. You know, has been in there helping, I know the code enforcement officer has done things too, but I know that Mr. Wall has been in the building. He certainly seems to know what's ahead of him, and he's not just only vested financially, he's a local, successful businessman, who has demonstrated a love for this building, quite frankly. Forty years of various forms of ownership of this building, with people that are partially vested in it have failed. There have been multiple opportunities for someone to secure this business at little to no cost. I think it's time for a decision to be made that takes all interests into account that aren't one extreme or the other. We need to put this property in the hands of a local vested owner who was committed to Wilson Hall in Bucksport. We need to put this property back on the tax rolls while giving it an additional chance with minimal investment to succeed. There's of course risk, Mr. Carmichael, Councilor Carmichael said it as well, but if this is successful, the investment of this money will be minimal for the return that we could see, not just financially for the town of Bucksport, but as a once again central feature of our community. And I certainly feel that the point that putting this building, you know, or having a process moving forward about putting items like this out to bid is one that this council should consider. However, that is, those are not the rules right now, and Mr. Wall is the only person that has stepped up to do anything with this building. And I think we kind of need to do what Bucksport should do moving forward, keeping, you know, using what we already have and making it something that works for the future. That's my opinion.
No, I agree with a lot of what everybody's saying, that, you know, if we want to preserve the building historically, this is the easiest way to get there. And going back to a bid, we're not going to be sure that they're not going to knock it down.
Looking, I'm not a huge number guy, it's 65,000, it costs us roughly $40,000 to knock it down ourselves, probably another $20,000 to do something and make that, you know, something that the town will be proud of, a park or, or whatever. He's, he's still have probably 20, 25,000, so, I mean, really, it's, to me, that would be, it would be a wash on that aspect. We were going to invest that money anyway.
My only concern, and I stated the last meeting, and I'll state it again real quickly, and again, yes, it has been for sale, but since I've been on the council, we've never had really the appetite to sell it this way, where we've had people come up, and we haven't given the opportunity to give bids. We have one presented to us out of the blue with no asking of it. I still think we have a process in place for getting rid of town properties, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't follow that, and if it's still Mr. Wall that ends up as the bidder with whatever the process is, then we'd be able to go with that thing, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Item C, to adopt resolve 2019-39 to approve payment requisition 30 for the sewer treatment plant project.
Yes, this is, this is now related to the solar field that's going to be at that, and it's, it's engineering work from our engineers that's part of this, and this is also paid for by a grant from the RDA.
Counsel like to proceed?
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. Anything from the public, the council, all in favor? I'm going to take a quick minute. We had to have all the people like to leave now if they were here for just that one item or no items because we're going to move on to some other items. If not, we'll go forward. Thank you. Item 10, resignations, appointments, assignments and elections.
They thought about it.
Item 10, resignations, appointments, assignments and elections. I don't think we have any of those. 12, town manager report.
Community and economic development director Rich Rotella, Marina manager, harbor master Mike Ormsby and I met with representatives of the main port authority this week to discuss how they may help us as we move forward with the redevelopment of this community in terms of waterfront and port activity. It was a positive meeting and they may be holding a meeting of their board here in Bucksport in the next several months to learn more about what Bucksport is doing. They're very impressed with what they're seeing and they could be very helpful to us if we have infrastructure needs. So they have access to money, which is good. I'm working with the Lighthouse Arts Center and other community members and the owner, Kathy James, to develop a nonprofit to assume the operation of the facility. It is presently a work in progress, but the goal is for it to serve as an anchor for the arts community in displaying, selling, teaching, et cetera. There will be more information forthcoming on this transition, but it is, we are working on this. Department budgets are due to be turned in to me by next Thursday and we will also be having our goals and objectives session that evening, the 21st, at 6:00 as well. I will be providing you with a list of department identified goals and issues at that meeting for us to, when we're discussing what we're going to be working on this year. As part of this report, I've attached financial reports for the sewer, marina and general funds. Thus far, we are healthy and well within the parameters of the budgets for both revenues and expenses. And in addition, I have attached a report for property and sewer tax collections this year and with second half of taxes due at the end of March, we have already collected 54.6% of assist taxes this year, so we're on track. And finally, applications close on the town clerk position tomorrow and I will be setting up interviews next week to begin the process of hiring.
Any questions?
I wasn't here. When does her, when does she?
April 4th.
Question on, is it still a dead issue, the grown-up landing, any improvements to the grown-up landing? We talked to Wild, I think it was my first year, we talked about trying to do something over there that could make it easier for boats to be launched with the current.
Put a dock in.
The fingers or something?
Yeah, put a finger out that would prevent them.
I know we had some issues.
It wasn't DEP, it's the, it's that the evaluation of that by the state is that the cost of addressing that is significant because it's more than just putting a finger in or doing something along those lines. But they, I have and will provide a response to those requests that delineates the obstacles to those improvements. I'll provide it to you and then council still wants to. It was big numbers, significant in terms of trying to address that issue.
What's that? Item 13 is public hearings, approval of any licenses or permits. I think the only thing we have is the public hearing for amendments to Appendix K.
And the seniors group is here about the benches that I mentioned about?
Consider.
That's under permit because the council needs to approve.
Well, we hear from them first. Go ahead with that.
The seniors group is here this evening. Do you have a spokesperson? Pearl?
I'm a volunteer.
Come on down. She's going to talk about a request to the council to locate some benches on sidewalks.
My name is Pearl Swenson, Bucksport, and I am a volunteer for the senior resource committee of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. Brooke Minner, the executive director of Main Street Bucksport, had planned to be presenting on this request tonight for more benches on Main Street, but their daughter has been ill and she asked me to relay the following information. So I'm taking this from an email that she sent to me. Main Street Bucksport was able to help coordinate discussions between the senior resource committee and the school department. The high school industrial arts teacher, Mike Gross, has agreed that building benches would be a good project for his students to work on this spring. Main Street Bucksport has offered to get donated materials if that's necessary and we're waiting to hear back from the high school. Mr. Gross is coming up with some designs that will incorporate changeable art since public art had been identified as a goal in both the heart and soul and adept plans. Main Street Bucksport will also follow up with all business owners whose properties are closest to the location selected by the senior resource committee to make certain that there will be no problems placing them in that location. We would ask permission from the town to place these benches on public property, namely the sidewalks, and to agree to move them to a storage location in the winter for safe snow removal. The benches should be ready by the end of this year's school year. Do you have any questions?
I have one. They're going to be removable?
That's the plan. Now, Brooke Minner has done all the foot, the legwork on this, so she would know more in detail.
The only reason I bring that up, I'm 100% for, but don't get me wrong, but I'm afraid, you know, something, they're going to fall over or something. They're going to be, you know, some secured in a way that stiffly.
The reason that it said is removable is that they can't be there in this season. I have enough issues with plowing sidewalks without trying to get around the benches, but, but they would, the, how they're affixed or where they're located would need to ensure their stability and that they stay where they're put for the season. That would be part of.
Was there something we could recommend back to ordinance or street and roads that Brooke asked them to have that information?
Well, I'm.
I guess that's what we're into.
It would probably be infrastructure, but as I said, I.
Because my concern is being out on the sidewalk, we want to make sure they don't interfere with folks', you know, accessibility issues, things like that. The sidewalks somewhere like that wide if we're putting them in the middle.
We do have some suggestions of, when Brooke asked us, there are four areas that myself included on the Down East bus on Wednesdays have had to stand for over 20 minutes waiting for the bus because the Down East bus travels back on the right side. And if you wanted to go to the community pharmacy, for instance, or the variety store, you need to make sure that you're on the other side of the room when the bus comes by so he can see you. And the town office was another one. You know, I needed to be out on the sidewalk waiting for him because you couldn't stay protected in the town office and yet see, have the bus driver see you. So that's the main reason for asking for four benches across from the local variety store, Rosen's. I mean, I know there's spaces on either, either side. The town office, the US Cellular building had offered, I think, a couple of years ago, right Susan?
Yes.
That they would give us permission. And that's a location where one day I stood there with three other people with walkers, canes, waiting for the bus to come back. And I mean, you know, the inclement weather is tricky enough, but in the spring, summer and fall, if we had a bench there, that's just my perspective. Brooke had asked us where we would like them and so that's what the senior resource committee came up.
I think it's a great idea. I think we're just trying to, I want to make sure that they're not in the way of folks being able to move around.
I understand.
You know?
Would it be appropriate that if you approved this location with the approval of Public Works or in consultation with Public Works?
Chairman, that's what I was going to suggest was could, is it procedurally, can we approve it pending, you know, review by Public Works or whoever to rest your concern?
That's my, that's my, I absolutely think it's a good or bad idea, just I don't want it to be in the way.
I understand.
When you're trying to help, I just don't want it to be in the way to.
No, that wouldn't.
Hinder what you're trying to do.
That wouldn't go well with ADA.
It probably wouldn't.
Chair, I think if we were to push this out into another meeting or so, I think you're pushing the time because this is going to be a project for the kids. I think we would push it.
I'm fine with doing that and having the Public Works look at it, absolutely, yeah, that's fine.
Are there any comments from the other senior resource committee members that appear? Well, there's always places in, we decided like by Rosen's and where Main Bike used to be, it goes in.
How about you guys come up with where they are and we'll work with Public Works and then I bet we can figure it out.
I think these are the four areas that we wanted.
Perfect, yeah. And then figure out the best place in those areas.
We'll turn that back over to Brooke.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you, can you use a motion, Chair?
Since we're not spending.
We're not spending any money on that, right?
Spending money, but.
I'll make a motion that we have Susan contact Public Works to work with senior resource to figure out the best place to put these benches. All those in favor? Recovered. All right, now we're going to have a public hearing, amendments to Appendix K. Open up the public hearing. Anybody have any comments on the amendments we have to Appendix K, public hearing? Seeing none from council or public, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
We approve amendments to Appendix K.
Second. Your motion is second to approve the amendments. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items, item 14 is discussion items not on the agenda for council and public. We will start with the public first. If you could please come up, announce your name and speak loudly into the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Weida. I'm a resident of Bucksport. I'm pleased to give you a progress report tonight from the Citizens Initiative for Reducing Plastic. We are continuing to map out our plan to present a process for the town council to put forth an ordinance which would reduce the use of single-use plastic bags in Bucksport. We're having regular meetings that are open to the public and we encourage new faces to join us, including you. Our next full group meeting is scheduled for March the 11th at 4:00 PM at the Chamber of Commerce. Breakaway groups are also meeting to put together various projects relating to our goal. We are further educating ourselves so we can provide current and accurate information regarding the impact of single-use plastic bags on our environment. From the knowledge we are acquiring, one of our breakaway groups is developing a brief fact sheet that will introduce other folks to the scope of the issue that we are addressing. We continue to engage with other towns and citizens groups which have been working on similar initiatives throughout the region. As more towns are beginning to address this issue, we all can share relevant information and support our efforts. We are developing a process to canvas local businesses, to introduce them to our work and provide the fact sheet that will inform them of the scope of the issue. We are interested in hearing their feedback and we want to achieve our goal with broad community support. Members of our group have purchased two informative documentary films. One is called Bag It and the other is A Plastic Ocean. We intend to show Bag It to small groups gathered in private homes to develop awareness and bring more folks into our community work. We think anyone, including you, town council members, would be interested in seeing this relevant film which explores the impact of single-use plastic bags on our environment and human health. Anyone who would like to host or attend a viewing party can let us know and we will get that scheduled. Eventually, we would like to show both of these films in a larger venue to public audience. We have a breakaway group which is working on making cloth bags to be used as reusable replacements for plastic bags. I'm happy to introduce Shaw Bridges to you again, who is going to give you a follow-up show and tell on this project. Thank you very much. And here's Shaw.
Shaw Bridges, Town Farm Road. Last time I was here, I showed you some recyclable bags that were made from.
Thanks for seeing you on TV. Thank you.
I think it's because I'm so short and.
Thank you.
That I made out of pet food bags. And I also showed you a wide variety of tote bags. And at the time, I told you, people were asking for bags that could be put in the pocket. So I did experiment with that. Here's a nice color for Bucksport. And here's just another one. And the idea being that not everybody likes to go around with a tote, but they don't want to be left without things when they get to the store. The other thing that's happened is that quite a few people in town are interested in making bags. And I'm presently working with some senior citizens and I'm going to be going to the seniors, beginners sewing class to bring them on board, hopefully at least some of them. And also some students are interested in the project and learning to sew and make totes and other kinds of bags. So it is becoming a community grassroots kind of effort. I'll show you the project that came about kind of in an interesting way. A couple of years ago, we had a lot of these T-shirts available for sale through the Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of them left in bins. Leslie came up with the idea that I could make bags out of these that could be used for Prados. So I experimented, came up with a nice bag. And some of the senior citizens, besides myself being the senior, are helping me with these and I hope to bring more people on board. The other thing we need to experiment with is other kinds of bags that can be used for Prados. And that's, that's the thing I'll bring to you next time I come. I just want to make the point that this generated out of the heart and soul, 82 ideas. And I'm pretty excited about the continuation of community working together on this. I'm passionate about the issue itself, but even more passionate about seeing how people want to work together. So we'll keep you updated on our progress and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thanks, Shaw.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public have anything to say? Counsel?
Well, when you're involved with senior power, you better just get out of the way and let it happen, actually.
All right. Item 15, upcoming public hearings, destination of topics for committee assignment or scheduled committee meeting. You said that we have a meeting next week, goals and objectives?
We have goals and objectives next Thursday.
And that's at 6:00?
6:00, yes.
Any other, any other committee meetings that we need to schedule? Other than all the budget stuff we've got, I don't think we have anything else.
Budget's already scheduled.
Nothing else? Item 16.
Move for adjournment.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor?[1763.57]